Fields, soccer fields, baseball fields we're going to build, but really about how as a community do we plan the process of taking this asset we're calling West Park temporarily, moving it forward so we can construct the park for our future. So with that, I believe Mr. David Code will come forward.
If I could, by way of introduction, let me kind of bring you up into this point for a moment. Thank you for being here tonight. Just for a history, we began assessing in this area to really look at what we needed as a community in terms of parks and recreation in 2011. In November of 2012, we issued an RFQ for professional services and as a part of that process, Kimbley Horn was selected. We contracted in 2013, purchased the McDonald property, as you know, which we are going to discuss today in July of 2016. And then recently, the council authorized a contract to proceed with the master planning services. So just by way of bringing us to this point and introducing Mr. David Code and what he is here to do with you in terms of planning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Angela. Again, my name is David Code and I'm with Kimbley Horn and Associates. And I appreciate another opportunity to come before this body to work with the city of Murfreesboro. I've had the sincere pleasure of working with Murfreesboro over the last 20 years in development of the Starplex, at Midnight Park, Seagull Soccer Complex, Stones River Greenway, and multiple other projects with the city. And so again, we are excited to bring this project forward and continue in developing your park and recreational system. What we're going to do today is talk a little bit about the history, which Angela has done, project location, the project approach. The real goal of this meeting is to make sure we have a clear understanding of how we're going to approach the community, the outreach efforts that we're going to work with, and get input from the community as to how this piece needs to be developed. Understanding that this piece is only one piece of the City of Murfreesboro Park and Recreation Association's overall facilities, and how this piece will add to what you have and allow us to look at future expansion in other locations as well. Talk about project schedule, and then really open dialogue to make sure that we are taking the approach that both the Park and Recreation Committee and the City Council sees us moving forward in. This again, just kind of shows you the location. It's immediately off of 840, Veterans Parkway Extension is adjacent to this property and as well as Blackman Road. So it's about 120-acre parcel. This gives you a little more detail of it. It's currently agriculture in use. It's currently still in the county, so it'll have to be part of an annexation process. And it has several large pasture areas that have just had corn on them, and then they're coming out of that. And it has approximately 30 acres between our site and Veterans Parkway, which the city is looking at potential negotiations and adding into this park itself, which would give us a viable access into the site. You have other streets and roads around it which will work, but it'd be a nice addition if we could actually include that as part of this piece. Earlier today, we met with all your city departments. So the process began about 10:00 this morning, meeting with city departments to talk about planning, zoning, and engineering, and stormwater, and utilities, and infrastructure improvements, to make sure all the departments are on board, make sure we have the current information. Because as you develop this portion of your city and you annex this in, there may be other utilities and infrastructure needs that are going to come along with it, and we want to make sure they're involved in the process of how we go about providing not only this park, but other services to this general area for the growth of Murfreesboro in the long term. Again, the site's about 120 acres and the 30 acres is immediately adjacent. So this is our approach. This is a long-term approach getting us through the master planning. One is have a kickoff meeting. And we determined early, because of the way the city of Murfreesboro operates, we wanted to have a joint meeting between city council and the Parks Commission at several levels, keeping you engaged in the process and understanding and the decision-making as we go along. We understand at the end of the master planning process, there'll be a need to actually have additional revenues for the construction of this park. So we felt like it was key and critical to the overall development that you stay involved as we move through it. We did a site visit today, and again, meeting with all your staff departments. We really looked at utilities and infrastructure, and stormwater in particular, because we know we've had flooding in 2010 on this property. We know we have sinkholes on this property. And we looked at stormwater management for a larger area that we'll be discussing as we move forward in the process itself. A part of that site visit becomes part of our site analysis, looking at access, visibility, understanding the property, understanding the adjacent parcels that are to it, to making sure we have a full understanding of how best to utilize this park as we develop the program, as we develop actually what will go on this site. Next, before we really do put a pencil to paper, is the community survey, and really going out in the community and understanding what the community is looking for. You've recently completed your 2035 plan, and in looking at that plan, we want us to use some of the outreach and same techniques that you used during that plan to get buy-in from the community, to understand what their needs and desires are. And so we can see how that fits into what the needs assessment shows for the project itself, which we'll talk about just in a second. Park programming, that comes out of that survey, that comes out of the needs assessment that was identified in your 2035 plan. And together, those elements come into where we do what we call a design charrette. Where we'll sit down and we'll take two concepts and determine uses on the property in two different manners. Some may have more field, ball fields, some may have less, some may have lakes, some may have trails, all the different elements, so that we can come back before this body and the community itself to say, here's two ways that we could develop this. The biggest piece of this is how does this then fit in with your overall park and recreation system? Because as you develop pieces here, it's going to allow us potentially to change some purposes and uses on existing fields that you have. So we have to look at this strategically with your long-term growth of Murfreesboro, and how developing certain facilities here may be best suited because of the topography, and also maybe best suited because it allows you to free up land and property that's already being used elsewhere for other types of uses. And that's where the Parks Department comes in, and we'll show you in a minute, kind of how that 2035 long-range plan was identified, and some of the current needs that the city has right now in the recreational system. Those preliminary concepts then get go back out before this board and the body, general public, and have additional public input. We like to keep the public engaged throughout the process, as well as these two bodies represented tonight throughout the process. With that, we'll do a final master plan. That'll take the concepts, and generally we'll see pieces of one concept and pieces of the other concept, and we'll put them together for the final plan itself. And then we'll have continuing updated meetings as we move from a master planning standpoint into a construction development, as far as design plans, as to what the council resolves as what they want to appropriate dollars for, how much of the park, what facilities they want to build at this time, and then through construction. So identifying needs. I hope most of you have already looked at your 2035 plan, as it talks about specifically your park and recreation. But as you can see, overall, there's a deficit. And looking at your overall plan, that there was about 500 acres short in the long term in your 2035 plan of where you need to be, meeting mostly the NRPA, which is your National Park and Recreational Standards. You know, this piece actually, you know, will take care of a lot of that need. But I think more importantly is what's in the bottom of this, the current facilities. Your current facilities allows for 120 teams at your Barfield Complex, 80 teams at your Starplex, 50 at McKnight. And right now, those facilities are all maxed out. You have no additional capacity to add more teams at those facilities, even though you have a larger demand than what you're currently supporting. If you look at just one element, the adult softball, you have three fields that are being played for adult softball. To work in the schedule, you have one field per each of those complexes that is for the adult softball, which allows you to do four games five nights a week, allows you to have a little additional there. And you're splitting 120 teams through spring and fall. So you can only play 60 teams in the spring or 60 teams in the fall. You can't play the 120 that wants to play in just your current status itself. That's just a snippet. I think what it overall does show you is that you're growing, and your growth potential will need to invite more land appropriated for just these activities and other passive activities that'll be identified and have been identified through your department as you look at the overall 2035 plan. So in this overall park itself, being one of your first really regional parks on the west side, you have Barfield Crescent to the south, but this will be a new area of growth that's taking place in your town and having a large regional. We see that you're going to have some athletic sports fields, both active for that and then passive recreation. And potential programming elements that have already been identified are those listed below. But we know once we engage the community in the dialogue, we'll probably find some other elements. You know, there's some mountain biking people. They would like additional mountain biking trails. Probably will get listed. But as you look at the flatness of this piece of property, probably doesn't lend itself best for that type of use. And that's where we'll take our expertise in looking at the terrain and topography and help you identify what we think are some of those uses that are appropriate for this site. And it may not be here, but maybe additional sites that you look for in the long-term future. And that's where the city has done very well over the past of identifying those needs and using every facility you have throughout the city to move leagues around as you add new facilities, so that you can maximize the use of those facilities, both in a recreational standpoint for the current populations and people living here, as well as for tournaments. You have, you know, 17 fields, and one tournament could bring you about a million and a half dollars in economic impact. So you're very good in using tournament fields and tournament facilities, as well as taking care of the population in the residency of Murfreesboro. So now let's talk just a little bit briefly about phasing. So our first phase is this master plan phase. And we see it being about a seven to eight-month process. Allows community engagement throughout it, allows us to come in the May and June time of having a final concept, so that we can move forward to the next phase. As you see, there's a lot of stars, and see a lot of red stars. Those red stars represent when we want to interact with your two bodies to make sure we're on the right track, that we're proceeding in the right timely manner, and that we communicate well with the citizens as we've gone along. We want to make sure you're engaged in the process. You see some public meetings, some neighborhood meetings, and additional meetings we want to have with the property owner himself as we go forward with this process, so he understands what the city is looking at doing with the property that's been sold to him. And we agreed to do that. So that first piece is about a six to eight-month process. The next piece is really looking at the final master plan, and then identifying what those costs are. Those costs will include onsite facilities, but could include additional costs associated with off-site infrastructure improvements that need to be placed. You may have some transportation issues as far as turn lanes, signals. You may have some off-site sewer, because sewer is on the southern side of 24, of 840 itself, I'm sorry, of 840. So we're going to have to bring sewer across. And we have some stormwater issues we have to deal with. It may include some off-site improvements. So we've given about a three-month process to go through, much like what you've done on the fire hall, bring a construction company in to help us identify the costs, look at the onsite and offsite, so you clearly understand what the complete cost would be of this facility, and then allowing you to have additional capacity for other types of facilities on the side of 840 as it continues to grow and the city continues to grow. Construction document phase. This is preparation phase of the plans. So based on your determination of what you'd like us to build at this phase, we'll go into preparing construction documents. And we've allowed for six to eight months for that, because there are a couple of months of permitting. We may let some early packages for going out and doing grading. A mass grading package could be done early. But most of the plans and architectural plans that go along with the buildings and other facilities will be turned in, completed, and go through your permitting process. Again, I also said we do have to go through acquisition as far as bringing this site into the city. So there'll be annexation, and there'll also be rezoning, because currently it's not currently zoned, and the designation would probably be P for Parks as it's designated as it comes into the city. So there's several processes that we'll combine and put into the same timeline, but we feel like we've given you adequate time to make sure that we can get these accomplished. And this is probably one everybody really wants to see, when are we going to be ready to play? So we've given it a timeline that allows us to complete the project in August of 19. Now, there are ways that we can shorten that timeframe. Again, the major issue with park and recreational facilities, as you're building sports fields, is timing of getting grass established. Takes you 12 weeks to get grass established for sprigging of fields, which has to start in June. You use in Bermuda. You have to have hot weather, and you have to have irrigation, and you need about 12 weeks. You can rush that, but all that does rushing it and bringing fields up to use earlier than that, costs you long-term in maintenance. Because if they're not fully grown in and not fully established, then your long-term maintenance is going to be more cost. And again, you're building a new major facility, and maintenance is not only using your existing staff and equipment, it's adding additional staff and equipment to manage this new facility on the west side of town. So again, we've given you a conservative outlook. We'd like to shorten it up as well, as I'm sure some of you would, and we can certainly look at how we can accommodate that. But I did want to give you a realistic approach, where if you're opening in August of 19, you may have a little bit of use that year, but in the springtime, you're fully ready and operational. That's really our entire presentation. Our goal today was to hear more from you about our approach, about our timeline, about issues we may not have thought about that we need to think about, and bring you up to speed on where we currently are in the process. And with that, I'll open up to questions.
Any questions?
I'll make a comment that, you know, a lot of the first six or eight months that you had listed, it seems like we've pretty much already been through that process with the 2035 plan. I mean, we already kind of have the data. You showed it to us tonight. You know, I don't, it's not that I don't want to have public input, but we've kind of already gotten it. And so maybe we can reduce that very significantly, like maybe tonight, six months from now, or whatever that is.
And Rob, you may want to jump in. Our idea was to say, here's the process we looked at to go through. We can certainly shorten that up. I think the biggest thing is, you know, active versus passive recreation, what type of facilities we're going to build on here. Certainly from the park's standpoint and the parks department's standpoint, they have certain things that they feel like would be the most appropriate needs. But we didn't want to reach out and say, this is exactly what was going to get built, before we had really input from the community itself. So again, that comes back to this early survey, finding out what the community, and really getting clear direction from this body or bodies as to which way you would like us to go.
Rob, it seems to me that the, one of the, you know, kind of the major issues here is going to be dependent on whether or not we actively search out and find a second site. You know, what we do here pretty much has everything to do with that decision, it seems like. I mean, if we don't have a second site, we probably have to do more of a combination of things at this site. Whereas if we do have a second site, we can sort of focus one direction on one site and another direction on another site. So what's your plan there?
I do have a second site possibly in mind. I got some information late Friday that I want to take a look at. I forwarded some information to Mr. Tyndall this morning, that there is a potential for additional land on the west side of the interstate that could potentially be used for park property. It is a little bit more remote. But in terms of, you know, back to your point a moment ago, Mr. Lance, about the input of the 2035, the table that you saw there really were came out of Parks and Recreation Standards versus what our current inventory is. And while we had a little bit of public input, I know we'll need to do a little bit of that, but I do hear, you know, your point about trying to move quickly. We want to get the input, and we can look to see if we can make that community engagement, you know, tighten up that schedule a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the schedule here, we've got, I guess, the neighborhood meeting in January and the public meeting in January. Gosh, those, those could almost take place simultaneously. The property owner meeting a couple of weeks after that, and the council board meeting could be at the end of January. It looks to me like we could compress those two months right off the bat and get them pulled together. So I mean, we've already saved a month there. I know we want to compile the information that we gather, and we'll need a week or so for that. But, but there's no scenario that four meetings can't take place in four weeks. I think that we can compress that and get that. That pulls the two meetings that we've got in March back to February, which even if you went on the time plane you've got now, we're back in the end of April rather than the end of May. So I mean, there's, there is room for compression there, no doubt.
Yeah, we'll be glad to do that.
Also, I think my biggest concern, especially off the comment that you just made, that we're looking at more land, is I don't want us to get to the point personally. I'm speaking for myself, not for the council or my board membership, but, but I don't want us to get so house-rich that we're furniture poor. And I think that there's a very, very important need of a sports com-type facility on that side of the interstate as soon as we can get it in place as well. And I don't want us to put, push that out because we're trying to buy so much land on the other side. And so I think that, and there's no reason these constructions can't be taken place simultaneously. But, but with the YMCA closing down, the western side of town, come in with me, Kurt.
I'm good, Ray.
Okay. But the western side of town is in severe need of that type of facility, and I think it's needed more now than it even has been in the past.
I agree with Eddie. That's one of the things, when I ran my campaign, I promised that I was going to get a park on the west side, even though I knew it was coming.
That's what happens when you don't have any, that's what happens when you don't have anybody you're running against.
And run unopposedly, that's a good plan.
But I get calls on a daily basis about the west side park. You know, when is it going to happen? When is it going to start? And I think people are encouraged about getting something on that side. And just like Eddie said, I think, you know, we need to be cognizant of some type of sports com over there while we're doing this, even if it's sitting on the same property. It's something that we need to think about. And moving forward, we've got a couple of other things, you know, I just won't bring those up right now, but to be on that west side too, because it's going to be a major thoroughfare, and people are going to be coming. You're right off the interstate. I'm thinking a lot of traffic, which is good. Shane, have you guys played down at the complex in Jackson? I mean, if anybody's been to Jackson, Tennessee, seen their complex. I mean, that place stays packed. It brings in a lot of revenue. And so I think that's one of the things we got to look at. You know, this is a revenue builder, and we need that.
Good.
And I guess when I'm saying a sports com facility personally, I'm thinking more about using that property that we've got on the corner of Blazin Fortress, because we've already got the property. It's almost an ideal location as far as geographically centered. It's on Fortress, which is a main thoroughfare. It's got tons of pluses to it, just like Memorial and Sportscom, so.
Okay, very good. Any questions down there?
Tim? I do have one question. I'm not real familiar with the annexation process. Does a compressed timeline interfere with that process at all?
Not other than the 30-day announcement that we're having a public meeting, our public hearing.
I'll see why we wouldn't have that annex real fast.
Should be pretty simple. With the zoning, it's going to be set up as parks, so.
Thank you.
Go back to the, we're looking at the master plan phase, and it's still on our screen. You've got public meeting and neighborhood meeting. We've talked about compressing or combining. How do you define the differences between those two meetings?
Well, in general, with you have a neighborhood, you'd be talking to all the property owners who are immediately adjacent to it, especially if you have a large neighborhood. In this particular case, it's all in the county, and you don't have that many neighbors. So I think combining it as a joint meeting is very easy for us to accomplish. You know, the one thing about this is that there aren't a lot of neighbors. It is your future growth area out there. So we may be talking to more people that's on the south side of 840 and engaging them in the process of understanding, because they would be the closest true neighbor neighborhoods associated with this park.
So normally, when you define neighborhood, neighborhood meeting, it's more of the people who
Community immediately surrounding.
Who would be affected by construction, not by the planning of what the park would look like.
Correct.
That's more the public. Okay. I, when they talked about combining, I didn't want any, I didn't want to take away any opportunity for the public to share their desires for what this park could become, the desires for what uses might be incorporated. But obviously, if it's a neighborhood saying, hey, we're going to do a construction entrance over here, we'll, we'll do, construction will go from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, people over on the bridge of the road don't, you know, that's, that's
Right.
Not what we're interested in.
Well, and our approach is twofold. We're going to do a survey, use the survey tools that you use for 2035, and then actually have some public engagement meetings, so we get people to come out to it. So both ways, we'll get different groups. And hopefully, as we're having this presentation and people are seeing this on TV, then they'll know that this is actually moving ahead, and that some of your sports groups and others may come out and say, hey, is there an opportunity for our facilities to be a part of this? And that's what we're hoping to hear.
And so within that component, how is the best way, as we discuss public meetings, but also for folks who are maybe watching on TV, who might read about it in the paper tomorrow, hopefully we've got somebody who'll report on this for the paper tomorrow, to communicate opportunities or desires or wishes or what they envision the park, what's the best way for them to communicate that to us or you or?
Good question. I think from a marketing standpoint, and really pushing what those, what those opportunities are, that something will be really working. The, the tool that Mr. Lyons had alluded to earlier, the, so it's a, almost a Um, the, the tool that Mr. Lyons had alluded to earlier, the, um, so it's a, a almost social media piece. It used to be called Mind Mixer. Those of you who are very active in the 2035, I believe now it's My Sidewalk. So that's something that, um, we will be looking to really promote with that, um, with that element. And then also just, I think, um, you know, Mr. Shirley and our, um, Park Commission meetings and, and all of those things. And really looking for all of those different opportunities and, and working with our marketing coordinator and with our public information officer to, um, make sure that people are aware of, of, of how to find those as a part of this process.
So Mr. Coe, if, if we say that we were aggressive and we were able to get a pretty quick idea of what we, we see the public wants. I mean, is 19 as early as we can get it, get it done?
Uh, it
I mean, I guess the question is, is there any possible way to meet the June of, of 18? As far as hitting this, the cycle on having, um, grass in the ground on, on, in June of 18? Cause we were saying August of 19, is that right of having it?
Right, so you'd be, you're, you're, you would have to be pushing the entire project schedule up about eight months. Cause you have, once you start your mass grading, as I said, that may be a package that we set out separate from the actual facilities, so that it could be graded and started earlier. Uh, because that grading in a parks project, you, you have to take it in a certain order. So you have to get your mass grading done first. Then you got to get your electric to site, cause you got to get your irrigation in the ground. Because once you hit June, you need irrigation in the ground, grading done, and some fencing up so that you don't mess with the fields. The fields have to be finished out, ready to go, and then you sprig or you sod.
And, and don't get me wrong, I, I don't want you to think that we're not being thankful. I mean, I think we're all thankful that we have West Park. And I can't speak for the, the Parks and Recreation Commission, but I, I'll say from my standpoint, I had no idea that when we came to an agreement to purchase the property in early 2016, that we were looking for a three-year process to get a parks in the ground. I mean, we, the numbers, or the dates we had heard were 18 months from the time that we have designed to the time that we can get a park in the ground, two years max. And, you know, the, the part I'm disappointed in, you know, we've been talking to people about, we're going to have these parks on the ground. We've got the 125 acres, we're excited. And now to say, oh, by the way, it's going to be really, really good, but it'll be here sometime the end of 2019. So if we can push that up, that would be
Our goal is to be able to. And when we have the ability to, it just has to be approved through the process and for you. And again, that's why we're keeping you engaged, because you will make those decisions and you will make the recommendation, what you want us to start the next phase on construction and design. And all that's in a budgetary cycle. So yes, we can move the schedule up, we wanted to give you a realistic schedule. Uh, we wanted you to understand the constraints when you're talking about sports fields and turf, which is different than just doing concrete and asphalt. Uh, so by moving that up, we can do, um, we just need to want to make sure that you understood what took place and why the schedule was set as it was, but.
One thing I'll tell you is, I mean, look, the, the construction phase is the least surprising part to me frankly. Um, you know, taking eight, eight or nine months to get documents and bids before we can even get it bid out was the part, you know, that's, that's, I'm, that's the part that I'm most surprised by. And then the, then you add tack on six or eight months to just figure out what we want to do with the park is another part that I'm surprised by. So it'd be those two pieces of the, the puzzle that I would think we need to get compressed rather significantly. You know, and Stephen, I want to mention this to you. We, you know, we, we've been, uh, through the 2035 plan, through just Thomas and Angela's way of life every day. We get public input all the time about what we need at, at our parks. You know, you guys see it. So, you know, to, to stretch out a six-month process where we have meetings, just so, you know, we get, just so we can say we've gotten public input in some formalized way. I'm good with it, we want it, but I, we got to be real careful about how long we let that last. Because at the end of the day, we all have to make a decision on what goes there. Right? And so part of that decision is going to be the, the table that you put up here for us, which is what we know we need. Now, maybe some of the little ancillary things that go around, you know, the, the periphery of the park or in the middle of the park, the, the smaller pieces, i.e. the stuff that's not the athletic fields. You know, yeah, we probably could, could use some more input, but don't, I mean, you guys get input like this regularly anyway? So you got a pretty good idea probably already about what the public would want out there? Is that, I mean, is that fair to say? I, I don't want to say that if it's not, but it seems like it would be. So six months, that's kind of what I was thinking when I was talking earlier about six months might be, you know, be able to be compressed a bit.
Well, let me throw this out. One of the approaches based off of what we know the results and are, is that we need active athletic fields. Would it be more appropriate to work with the Parks Department and Parks Board on identifying those facility needs? And saying, those needs that we ought to put in this field, in this complex take up so much land. And we have other land for open space. You need some open recreational spaces where you can have large gatherings, uh, for Fourth of July and other stuff. Again, this park needs to be associated with that. So we could, you know, have, here's identified so much acres for active recreational fields. And then have the general public give us more input on associated with these fields, what are the other activities that we think blend in well?
Yeah.
Large walking track, uh, we're going to have to do a lake for irrigation. We want to do well system, but we also have a storm drainage issue we have to deal with, so that lake is going to be a component. Might be able to address it that way, which still allows the Parks Department to have input as to what they know their needs are. But then allows for the general public to come in and say, hey, with these other lands that are available within this park, these are the things we have identified, we'd like for you to look at it, is, is it that way? It's a little different approach.
And Mr. Coe, I'll, I'll say this, we get complaints about a lot of things within the city. But the complaints that we get through the Parks and Recreation Department is, wow, it's really crowded. So we don't ever get complaints of, hey, your facility's not nice or, you know, that's not the complaints we get. So speaking for me, I trust our Parks and Recreation staff, I trust the Parks and Recreation Commission. Y'all do a phenomenal job on every facility we have. So I, I would like to see us use the, the, if, there's no way we can hit June of 17, grass in the ground? I mean, there's
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Well, I'm saying there's no way we could hit June 17, grass in the ground next year. So we know that our next target date is June of 18 to be able to have sprigs planted. So if there's a way, in my construction mentality, is we know that we've got to have something to try to at least have, have something planned out to hit that June of 2018 and let's work backwards from that on, from there, but.
Okay. I think that's good. And then what I'd allow, like the opportunity is sit with staff, talk about what they see the program needs are for the athletic fields, how much land that would take and what appropriation land would be left over for other accessory, uh, items on there for the walking trails and for other things, and allow us to move forward on that. That would allow for public engagement and input, but it also allow your staff who's been working diligently, trying to move from this field to that field to cover everybody's bases, to really have the strongest input on telling you what you need to build at this facility for not only your current needs, but your long-term needs. Cause as you build new facilities here, allows them to reprogram. And that's hard for the general public to understand unless they're in the business of, hey, we can reprogram these other fields at McNei to do something different if I'm building these new fields here. And only them and their expertise is really going to come into play to understand that.
And 123 acres sounds like a lot of land, but when, when you all start getting together to talk about baseball fields, soccer fields, open space, walking trails, 123 acres is going to go really quick. So that's where we really have to look at a long-term plan on what's the next site that we may not be able to afford to build it right now. But at least having a plan in place that if there's that five or six-year need, then we've got five or six years to talk about.
I, I think I, I'd love y'all's input on this too, but I mean, it seems like from our perspective, what, what we would need to see would be something like, uh, you know, if we only have this property versus if we have, you know, plans to have another piece of property, let's just say in the next five to 10 years, you know, what, what would you guys suggest, you know? So it's kind of be like, okay, well, if we're only going to work with this property, maybe we got to have some baseball, softball and some all-purpose or soccer, football type fields, all included in this facility. Or, you know, if we thought, you know, we might buy another piece of property sometime in the next six, eight, five, whatever, however many years, not too distant in the future, that you might want to just do all of one here as far as athletic fields. And then try to shift to the next with the next. So I mean, maybe two different scenarios would be helpful for us. Then we can look at that and kind of go, okay, from a budgetary standpoint, you know, what can we kind of afford to do? And, and, and sort of prioritize that as it relates to our budget and our CIP, is that?
I, I agree. And I was going to mention what Eddie talked about a minute ago. I think it's important because I think the two are going to greatly influence one another, what we're doing with the Fortress property. And this one need to be done together, because I think one is going to influence the other.
And I think there probably are some unique things that the public's going to come forward with, like a skate park or a splash pad and those type of things that we don't have any of in our city. I, I don't foresee us building a hockey rink or some of the other facilities that people might come forward with because of the expense of them. But, but I do think there's some things that we can put there. But really the main focus of what I'm seeing us looking at is primarily based on the situation of which fields do we have that are completely overcrowded today that we have demand for? And those are the needs that we need to fill. And, and then of course, the question of which facilities have we primarily based all on the north side of town or all on the east side of town? Uh, it's not, you know, it's, it's not like they don't have baseball fields on the other side of the interstate. Barfield Park is on the other side of the interstate. So, but, but they don't have soccer fields, they don't have, um, softball fields. Uh, there are some things that they have on this side that they don't have on that side. And I think those are the things that we primarily need to look at and say, are these overcrowded on this side? And if there is, then those are the things I think we really need to, to make sure that we focus on trying to prioritize on the property as well as what the public input is.
Well, and working with the Parks Board, and, and I'm throwing out ideas. It might be that we sit down with park staff, we do a prioritization based on what they think their needs are. Let's make sure with the Parks Board that we're in line with where they think those needs are, and then go out with this survey. And that can all be done in January.
I think that makes a lot of sense, David, because, you know, once we know what the absolute need is from a facility standpoint, that lets you know what you have left to take for the, to put them from input.
Okay. I, I think that's a good approach on this project. And I think that itself allows us to shorten some timelines and things up. Still gives general input and we'll get the, the surveys out and all so that we've got that input. And then as you look at additional property, just remember, every piece of property has unique characteristics to it. And some may be better situated, much like when we talked about the bike paths. You know, there's certain pieces of land that lend better to it than others. So even though you're adding new land, it may have better suited needs for that piece based on topography and, and location too.
Well, we need to take into account, and this is something the Parks and Recreation Commission will, will talk about. But, you know, originally this property was slated, um, there was discussion about warehousing and distribution. And, you know, I think the thing that we can be proud of, that this is really going to be the gateway to the west side of Murfreesboro. So, you know, we, we, we're going to set the tone for what happens now when you get off of the interstate coming from, from I-65. That's going to be the first thing that most people see when they come into Murfreesboro. Um, so I definitely think that we all want to do it the right way. Um, and, and trust you guys will, will come up with a good plan on that.
We turn out first-class facilities and I don't like this, it's going to be any reception. We just need to do it sooner.
And I think, I think you're right, because as we talked today in planning, you know, we talked in generalities, what does this type of complex bring to the city and this community on this side? What are those services that are associated with it? Hotels, restaurants, uh, service stations, those kind of things. Because it will be used as a regional tournament facility too. And so those things then start changing the dynamics of what's out there currently today and how this interchange is going to develop. Cause there's a lot of potential for it to develop around it.
It's important that we're able to do that stuff too. I mean, I, you know, I'm not going to, there, there aren't enough frisbee golf tournaments in the state to, to, you know, put heads in beds and generate a lot of tourism dollars. So I mean, if we're going to be paying 40, $50,000 an acre for property, and we almost have to do a good bit of that to something that's going to be able to have tournaments. I mean, you know, we're going to be able to provide tournaments and tourism dollars to the back, to recoup some of the investment, right? Um, so, you know, I mean, uh, while we want that kind of stuff, that is going to be, have to be the ancillary or the periphery type, type of, type of things for these facilities. It's just a matter of math these days.
You're rebuilding Murfreesboro on the west side of town. I mean, that's where your growth is long-term, is you double in the population, that's where a lot of your growth is going to be. So how do you look and purpose those positions for those service facilities that the city will control on that west side to serve everybody? And much like we did at Segal Park, we ended up having a neighborhood component. So it was just not all soccer. We also had an acre that we cut out for emergency services out in front. And so those kind of things. You have other needs out there, they're going to be for fire protection, for schools, for other things. And so all those need to come into play as you look at redeveloping Murfreesboro on the west side of town. And it's growing fast and you're going to get a lot of pressure, continued pressure from private development. So as you can get these pieces, purpose in that makes great sense.
And we need to, uh, also consider, a lot of this is going to be expensive. But we need to put the best of the best in the, in these facilities. For instance, if we go at turf, we need to put the best, so we won't come five years from now. Cause there's going to be a lot of wear and tear on that.
Correct.
Have to pull it up and put some more, so. And that's where, if we put that, it's going to be a big cost, but in the long run, it's going to really be worth it. And that's very expensive, but we need to put the best in our facilities and all of our equipment we put out there.
Right, because your long-term, your maintenance and operations, and well, we've already started talking about that and looking at what it will take staff-wise to maintain, operate, program it. Uh, because this will be another big facility for you and it may be your largest to date.
Right, and I think a priority also needs to be, I know Eddie was alluding to this a few minutes ago, that as people come up with unique things that they want out there, I think that should have a priority. Something unique that's not in the other two. I think that's one thing we need to look at, the uniqueness, because that will be the gateway into our city. And, uh, you know, everybody knows
Of course.
Yeah, well, everybody knows it's going to be a soccer field, a baseball field, but if they see a wow factor of something, hey, wow, they have this here, this popular in other places.
Right.
I think that should be in a priority when we go planning, what's going in the park. Yeah, golf course, okay.
I, I also think too, um, when we start thinking about, I know we're, we're, we're in need of fields, but we also think about, let's think about the community as a whole. It's got to be a mixture. And, you know, those walking trails, it's going to tie in with the community, it's going to bring the community together. So let's continue to look at that, because if we've got two sites, we can do multiple things on two different sites.
And if you're, if you can acquire that second piece, just doing a pure level of programming, quick concept themes that you know where you're going and the community knows you're heading that direction, that allows your park staff to really plan for that long-term future of how these pieces, again, will change and uses on different places can change as you continue to grow. And I, I think that's a benefit.
Awesome.
And then there's also, as we plan and we have the public meetings, you know, a lot of times that, well, it allows people to come out. But we have to also consider we have a part of our population that are not able to come out. So if somehow we can throw out some surveys to them or something, so when we're talking about this, this is a community project, it would truly be one and not just the physical bodies in these meetings. If we can have other ways to get information out so we can get the input of more of the entire community, I think that would be good.
Correct. And I think that's where Angela was talking about, the social media and the, and the surveys online and how we get those other people engaged in the process. And the good thing is that you've got a good track record, the 2035 had a lot of engagement. And we want to continue on that success and build on it and continue to get additional input as the citizenship of Murfreesboro grows. Any other questions?
Just, just, I, I'll go back to my original comment about Just, just, I, I'll go back to my original comment about the sports comm facility on the west side as well as the other sports facility. And I, I'm sitting here, I keep looking at this frisbee golf thing that's on the monitor in front of me. And the perfect location for the frisbee golf is not at the new location, because it's flat. It's, it's very good for ball fields, it's wonderful for corn fields and ball fields, but it's probably not a good frisbee golf location. But behind the place that I'm suggesting that we look at for the sports comm facility, it's a perfect place for a frisbee golf course, because it runs, runs down the river and it's very rough terrain and it's very congested down in there. And so, so it's almost the perfect location for that type facility. So if we take both of them in consideration as we're planning, I think it'll be advantageous to us. The, also the, I, I think there's potential for having not just one completion date. If we're looking at two projects together, hopefully, the sports comm project could be completed maybe before that. Also, we might could look at a limited use for the first season, so that it's not at full capacity, which does what you kind of intend to do, no matter what, I think. But I think if we can get it pulled forward with a very limited use, maybe that first season, except for the things like the walking paths and the splash pads and stuff like that to allow the turf to mature. I think that, you know, I, I think we'd be willing to have a less than completed project for the ribbon cutting and say, we've got the park completed and we just gotta wait for part of it to mature. I thi, I think that's a, a fair analysis of, of what I think we're hoping for.
Yeah, and our goal would be, if, you know, if we complete it in August, your fall ball starts at the end of August, moves through September and all. And, and the critical part is just making sure we have the best turf and all in place, where we're minimizing that long-term maintenance on it, because we've given enough time to get established.
Are we looking at any artificial turf facilities?
We haven't begun that discussion. Certainly, it allows you to have extended use on those and long-term maintenance, but it does have a much higher price. And it may be that we need to associate one or two fields with that. I would say it'd be quite expensive to do an entire complex.
Right, right, I'm not talking
But one or two fields that can then be used for those purposes, again, to be able to continue play when we have rainy days and other things would be a good option.
For people, and, and Rick referred to the tourism side of the business. Oftentimes, I think if, if you were getting down to that championship game rather than be able to rain it out, if you could get five or six games pushed over to one particular turf field or something where you might be able to complete your tournament and everything that weekend, you would have a more successful event. And, and I think that's part of, part of what will make the whole project successful in the long term is, is not only is it successful for the community side of it, but also for the tourism side.
And they're becoming much more prevalent. I, I know in Nashville and probably here, if you look at your high schools, you know, they're going because they're doing soccer and football, lacrosse, all those sports fields and activities are going on, on artificial turf. So even the band can get out there when nobody else is out there, instead of being in their parking lot. So I think it's a good option, we oughta look at that.
All right, well, thank everyone for all the good input. This is a good idea to, or a good, to see the process that we're about to go through. We wanna thank the Parks and Recreation Commission for all the hard work y'all do. A lot of the things that you meet on a, on a monthly basis, y'all make us look good, so we, we appreciate that. And I know you, y'all feel the same way, that the staff makes all of us look good in, in what you're, you're planning on. So, the city council, I'm just glad y'all are here. I'm just kidding. I do wanna mention how cool Kurt's jacket looks. That's pretty sharp. So.
Goes well with my whole head.
Yeah.
And turtleneck.
No comment.
All right, any other comments from the council? Chairman, you wanna close your meeting?
We stand adjourned.
All right. Thank y'all very much, you all stand adjourned.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.